Good morning.
Good morning.
More slack, maybe give me more slack.
Good morning.
No, I can't. That's it. You have any? She's ready.
Good morning. Second, like to call a meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Veal. President. Commissioner Brush. Vice Chair Mascherinias. Chair Romero.
Present. Thank you. We move to the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Veal.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, unriched, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rush, would you give us a salute, please?
I would be happy to. I salute the fire of the state of New Mexico as a symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. We'll move to the next item, which is approval. Entertainer motion, approve the agenda.
Are we ready, Tanisa, or not? Okay. Move to approve the agenda?
Better motion by, motion, Commissioner Veal. We have a second. Second, Commissioner Miguel Romero. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinias?
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Okay, we move now to awards and recognitions. Where's our, where's our manager? There he is. Manager, Hadeo. Mr. Hadeo, we're on now. Six awards and recognitions.
Chair. We have this, Michael Chavez. Michael Chavez is currently working on our senior programs. Office. She started off in the assessors. She went to the human resources department now. She is our financial person and senior programs. Michaela, would you please come forward? Morning, Michaela.
Morning.
We have a years of service, years of service certificate and recognition of five years of service to Taz County, presented to Michaela Chavez, March 2019 to March 2024. Taz County Board of Commissioners, Bob Romero, District One, Miguel Romero, Junior, District Two, Darlene Veal, District Three, Angelina Brush, District Four, Ronald Mascherinias, District Five. Thank you, Michaela, for your service to Taz County and for always doing a good job for us.
Thank you.
Johnny, where's Norma? Oh. I was getting your phone ready, so, so, yeah, I can take pictures.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have also a certificate for Norma, who's currently our DWI supervisor. Norma has worked up her way through the program and she's been Johnny's right hand over the last few years and they've always made a good team throughout the years, her and Johnny and Norma's been one of these dedicated employees also. So, Norma, we have a years of service certificate and recognition of 15 years of service to Taz County, presented to Norma Romero, March 2009 to March 2024. Taz County Board of Commissioners, Bob Romero, District One, Miguel Romero, Junior, District Two, Darlene Veal, District Three, Angelina Brush, District Four, Ronald Mascherinias, District Five. Thank you for your 15 years of service. Norma, another thing Norma does is she goes to a lot of public events, health fairs. You'll see her and Darlene and Johnny as well, the whole team, but Norma, for the most part, you'll see her out there in the weekends. All right, thank you, Norma.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
That's all? Okay.
Round two.
Sorry.
And she wasn't able to make it, but we do have a years of service certificate for Georgia Sanchez. She's been five years with Taz County from March 2019 to March 24. I'm not sure, Georgia might actually be the employee that drives the furthest to work. So, she lives in Corstia. Yeah, so she probably is. We've had employees that have lived in Motta, but we don't have currently anybody that's from Motta now. But, yeah, Georgia's probably drives the farthest and she has good customer service skills as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hadeo, and we appreciate the service of our employees. So, thank you again. We'll move to public comments on the agenda. This isn't...
New hires.
We're on.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. Daniela Marquez here to present to you the new hires for the month of March. First off, we have Feliz Vasquez, Communication Specialist Trainee, Silas Gramalia, Firefighter EMT, Angela Gomez, ADC Officer, Michael Scales, Firefighter EMT, Pedro Cruz Solorio, Firefighter EMT, and Taylor McGlynn, Firefighter EMT. Please help us welcome them to the Taz County team.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we move to public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak for three minutes on any topic to the commission, to the public. Anyone in the room would like, would you like to speak for three minutes? Go ahead, come forward. Please state your name and where you reside.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Romero. My name's Abraham Levin. I'm originally from Taz on Lama Mountain, but now I live in town near, in El Prado on Chavez Lane. And I wanted to come and speak with you guys today about the future of Taz. I know we've been having a lot of meetings with the city and surveys, the Taz County Survey, the Tourism Board Survey, about how we're going to do the future. And really appreciate your work here and I want to thank God for the building and our beautiful days and, and you guys. And may God bless you because it's about the spirit and about our future. And I'm concerned about the development, potential development, especially in the sagebrush country. I got the sage on my mind these days. And when I was a kid, I sort of thought all that land was the pleblo and BLM land out on the gorge, which is graces our, you know, our symbol of Taz County. Everything on our, our tourism brochures has to do with this beautiful picture of the gorge and the vistas and the beauty of our land, really, essentially, from all the way to Pilar, up to Colorado and across. And as we plan for the future, really hope we consider and respect the land and take care of it. And so that any develops, developments that we make should be in keeping with that beauty and the spirit of the land in order to keep our culture strong and the character of Taz as it is, empowering and beautiful, that same feeling that I have every time I see the vista of this magnificent place. And I'm sure you all have that same feeling. We don't want to lose that in 50 years for our children. So, I just implore you to remember that in your decision making about the future. And I know it may seem like people don't care, but people do care. And as I've been out on the ground, I've been collecting, I made this very simple petition and a letter that I sent you all yesterday. And everybody seems to be very receptive to it. And many people haven't had the chance to complete the surveys or not involved with the, the politics of Taz as much as I wish they would be. And so I just want to try and help lend a voice to that in our concern for the future. So you guys know that we do really care about the land and we really care about the vistas. And, I mean, really, like eight or 10 people are like, yeah, that's great, you know, eight out of 10. Yeah, we really want to protect the land. It's primary. Now, there are people that don't want to involve in politics, that don't believe in social service or civic service or such, but most people are really interested and they don't have the time. But my three minutes comes to a close and I just want to thank you guys again for your service and your good work here. And I'll be around, I'm trying to collect more petition signatures to try and get a good voice for the people that let us know that we really want to take care of the land and the developments we make should be in keeping with that. And you guys are empowered to do that and we're behind you and support you in that. So I want to thank you again and may God bless you and bless us all as the future comes upon us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Anyone else? Would anyone else like to take three minutes to speak to the commission? If not, we'll move on to the minutes. Approval of the March 19th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Commissioners, do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the March 19th, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brush.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascherinias. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinias?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you. Move to nine presentations. Mr. Hadeo.
Chair Romero asked that we table this until our auditor arrives. He did text. He did hit some heavy traffic and he said he would be here around 9:25. My suggestion to you and the rest of the commission is go on to the resolutions section of the agenda. By that time, he should be here.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to table until we, until the auditor gets here?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brush?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Veal. Madam Clerk, please call the roll, please.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinias?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And we are at 10 resolutions and ordinances, a discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2024-13, Resolution Authorizing New Guidelines for the County Lodger's Tax Grant Program, which outlines how applications are to be received, reviewed, and funded for the use of promotional lodgers' tax funds by community organizations and businesses. Jessica Sterns, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Romero Commissioners. Nice to see you here. I'm coming before you, two weeks after, excuse me, I first brought the draft guidelines to you to hopefully have your approval on the new guidelines so that we can open up a new grant making cycle of the lodger's tax promotional funds. I'm not going to go through the guidelines since I know that we went through them last time, but I stand for any questions that you might have. It did incorporate edits. The advisory board went through with a fine tooth comb and made some grammatical changes, spelling changes, and added a few clarifying points, but you all have had the final version of those. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions. Commissioner Veal.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, I just have a quick question in regard to, to, I didn't see, I did read it and, and thank you very much. As I stated the last time, it's very thoughtful and I really love the way it's set out. But is there any, any mechanism in place, and maybe I just missed it, in identifying how, while that event went? And, I mean, is there a method of measurement, some evaluation?
Yes.
Yeah, so in the final reporting that we'll ask for, not only are we going to ask for a budget versus actual to see, you know, what they projected to spend versus what they actually spend on their promotional funds. We'll also ask for things like what, what were their attendance? We will get the projected attendance from their application, so we'll ask what they actually, what actually happened if it was an event. And then if also they can talk a little bit about what they deem as a success. In the application, we'll ask them, what do you think success will look like?
Yes.
And so we'll ask in, for, in their final report, which will be due at the end of each fiscal year, what was that success? Did you meet those markers that you were looking for? And then we'll also get some copies of promotional items that maybe if they purchased an ad or if they, you know, did a radio spot, some of that language. So we're going to try to hit different things. I think this is a bit of an experiment this year that as we grow this new program, we'll start to see what works in terms of us being able to evaluate the success and what, what information we need to gather that we're not already.
Thank you. That's great. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
More questions? I just had the one on the reimbursement process. They, they don't get the, the funds upfront. Once they are awarded the, the funds and they, they go through a reimbursement process, how, how does that work for the applicants and grantees?
Sure, so the process is such that in addition to that budget versus actual, they need to submit an invoice, a receipt, and a proof of payment for each expense that they would like to be reimbursed for. So we need to see all sides of the transaction. And I'm working very closely with finance to make sure that everything is correct down to the cent because that can be part of the audit. But yes, they do have to, they do have to submit invoice, receipt, and then the proof of that payment. And that can be in the form of a check or a credit card receipt, the copy of a canceled check.
Okay, and the deadline for application?
So for this spring cycle, the deadline, I, I'm hoping that the, the period will be April 22nd through May 15th. So it'll be about three and a half weeks for folks to apply and I'm going to be promoting the opportunity widely throughout the community. And then there will be a second application period in the fall. And that's so that it will still be for grants within this fiscal year. But if folks didn't hear about it this first time or they have events that will be in the spring or summer, then they can apply in the fall for that, that time period.
Commissioner Brush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Jessica. This is exciting stuff. But the, the chair's question about the reimbursement process brought to mind a question. Did you think about or take into consideration that some of the applicants, it might be hard for them to pay upfront? And what, I'm not sure what we can do about that, but, you know, I, I can imagine that plenty of our potential applicants would, it would be hard for them to pay $10,000 or $5,000 for something first and then come back and get it reimbursed.
My personal feelings aside on that, I think we are bound by statute and by anti-donation of what we can provide upfront and what we can't, which is that we cannot provide funds upfront to private organizations. The nice thing about this is that in spite of that, in that it being a reimbursement process, folks can, in these new guidelines, they can apply quarterly, not apply, they can submit reimbursement for reimbursements quarterly. So they don't need to wait until the end of the fiscal year to be reimbursed for the full amount of their grant. They can be reimbursed for a small part of that each quarter so that they can have a little bit more cash flow.
Okay, thank you.
Trying to make it a little easier within the constraints of the anti-donation.
I appreciate the clarification regarding state law.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion to approve a Resolution Number 2024-13, a Resolution Authorizing New Guidelines for the County Lodger's Tax Grant Program.
A second. Second by Commissioner Mascherinias. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinias?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. We move to 10B, discussion, consideration, and thank you, Jessica. We move to 10B, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2024-14, a resolution appointing the DWI Planning Council, Mr. Johnny Rodella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission. Good to see you. Good morning. I'm here today just to discuss a couple of things. One, our council, we have Mr. Tencio, who's our chair, is retiring. So somebody stepped in, Mr. Ronald Montes stepped in. So that's one of the changes that we have. Also, Ms. Cassandra Romero, who was our vice chair, used to work for Rocky Mountain Youth, but now she went to other things, so she doesn't really have the time. So Ms. Michelle Rowe from Rocky Mountain would like to step in as vice chair. These are recommendations for, that the council put together for you. And we just wanted to know if we can get those changes okay by you. Mr. Jerry Holgriff will step in as the sheriff for a voting member as Mr. Tencio steps out. But the chair, like I said, will be Mr. Ronald Montes, the chief of police from Cuesta. Our last change on our voting members is Ms. Victoria Romo. And she will be the 11th voting member onto our council. And that's part of the first revolution, a resolution that I'm explaining today. Is there any questions on that? Basically some changes. That's all it is.
Mr. Chair, I've moved to approve Resolution Number 2024-14, Appointing the DWI Planning Council as presented by Mr. Rodella.
Motion by Commissioner Brush.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Mascherinias. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinias?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And we move on.
Next.
Thank you, and we move on to C, which is discussion, discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of Resolution Number 2024-15, a resolution amending and approving the DWI Teen Court Planning Council bylaws. Mr. Rodella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This one is on letter C of our old bylaws. It basically says the council consist of 10 voting members and two non-voting members. We want to change that to 11 voting members. And that's the name that I asked for Ms. Victoria Romo to come to our program. That would also help us out with making quorum because there's sometimes where officers are busy or things are happening. So we could still have only six to make a quorum, but we have that extra person to be there on the seat. And that's the only change I'm requesting for at this time. Any questions on that?
There are no questions. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-15, Resolution Amending and Approving the DWI Teen Court Planning Council Bylaw.
We have a motion by Commissioner Veal. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Miguel Romero. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I leave, I'd like to personally thank Ms. Norma Jean Romero for her service with me. Not only the service and hard work she puts into it, but dealing with me for 15 years, so. Also, also, just to let the commission know, between Norma, myself, and Darlene, we have over 60 years of service with the county. And I'd like to let that be known. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. If I can be excused, commission?
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodella.
Thank you.
We move to 10D, discussion, consideration, decision regarding approval of Resolution Number 2024-16, a Resolution Authorizing Disposal, Disposal of Personal Property for Intergovernmental Transfer of Vehicle to DeBaca County from Sheriff's Office, Fleet, Steve Mehta, County Sheriff, and Ms. Elsa Veal. Go ahead.
Good morning, Chair, Commission. Before you end the packet, you have a letter with a request for donation for a patrol vehicle from DeBaca County as well as information regarding the market value of this particular vehicle because it exceeds $5,000 and based on the statute of 13-6.2, anything over $5,000 has to get a resolution, has to be blessed, of course, and approved by the commission. And then at that point, I also have to say to the state auditor and DFA to get full permission to do the intergovernmental transfer to DeBaca County because it does exceed the $5,000 mark. So at this time, I stand for any questions, as well as Sheriff Mehta is here as well. If the commission have any questions they wish to ask in regards to this resolution.
Any questions, commissioners, on this, on this matter? I see no questions? Did you have?
I think there's.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I, I do have a quick question. Certainly, I guess my only question is, obviously, we can afford to, to spare one of these vehicles. So I, I know we wouldn't give it up unless we, we had others. So I guess I just, for the record, this is something that we can afford to do in regards to giving up one of our vehicles?
Yes, ma'am. So, DeBaca County put out a request statewide to all the counties. As you know, DeBaca County is an economically struggling county, someplace that we found ourselves about 15 years ago. So they put out the call. As such, we have a vehicle that is specifically set up for a K-9 unit. And as our K-9 is retired and I do not foresee us going down that path this year, you know, this vehicle is the end of service life. So it's our, it's not something that we would use in the future anyways. And because it's got the specialty equipment, the cage in the back for a K-9, and it's set up specifically for a K-9, this would fit their bill. And I think this would also work well to, as an investment into a relationship with DeBaca County. Taz County and Nopiselp already has an excellent reputation throughout the state for, for being there for the other counties and helping out. But I think this would bode well for an excellent relationship between Taz County and DeBaca County.
Great. Thank you for that explanation.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Miguel Romero?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miguel to approve 10E. This is a, this is a Resolution Authorizing Disposal of Personal Property for Intergovernmental Transfer of Vehicle, Vehicle to DeBaca County for, from the sheriff's office. So if there are no further questions or discussion, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinias?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, also. Commissioners, thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you, also. Commissioners, thank you. Have a good day. Thank you. We move to 10E, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of resolution number 2024-17, a resolution approving a sponsorship for a transportation project fund application for Blueberry Hill Road improvements. Mr. Joe Fernandez?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
It is an exciting time. We are getting close on starting the Blueberry Hill project. So I'm here to, have you take a look at everything and see if you have any questions for me as far as the, the application that was applied.
So clarification, you're starting part of it, but this particular one is for an application for grant, is that correct?
That's correct. This is the resolution that's needed for the transportation project fund, and we submitted it probably around March 15, 18.
It was around the 18th, and this one was due. So that was been supplied, and hopefully it'll, it'll go good.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Fernandez?
Yes, I do have a question. So thank you for that clarification. So we should be hearing back whether we get the grant, but this is a requirement that needs to be in place in order to be able to accept if, in fact, we are successful. Is that correct?
That's correct. We are, we do have to make an oral presentation before the Regional Transportation Planning Organization, that's generally on the first Wednesday of the month. We'll do our oral presentation along with the other eight entities that submitted. Like I mentioned previously, there's $7 million in the pot for our region, and so we have to go and get ranked. So the peers around the table will rank the presentation that we will do, and then they'll come up with a funding list, and then that funding list will be submitted to the Department of Transportation. District Five will review it and make their recommendations back. So we wouldn't really know until probably June or May, June, or probably June or July, they will know we are awarded funding. This is for phase two funding. When Joe started the presentation earlier, he said, getting ready to pave Blueberry Hill Road monies, and that's for phase one. So that's what the commission approved last fall, contract with GM Emulsions. Both Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Silva have been in communications with GM Emulsions to get going in May for the funding that we already do have in place.
Great, understand. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Thank you.
So yes, we are well on our way. Thank you.
Yes, so, so we essentially are trying to complete that project by doing it in phases. Right, because there's no way we're going to get $7, $8 million for a mill and overlay project in one swoop. We have approximately 1.1 million in grant funds that we've already accumulated. Those have some deadlines. We're going to get through this first phase. If we're awarded monies for phase two, and the grant agreement comes early, like August, September, we'll try to get another phase in if the contractor can get it in.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Chair?
This is Commissioner Brush.
Thank you, Chair Romero, and thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Great update. I just wanted to, it's not really a question for either of you, but just a comment. A lot of us heard from the NMDOT last week that construction on Paseo through the heart of town will likely be starting in May. Just wanted to point out that we could be having two fairly significant construction projects going on, on two of our most significant routes through our area. Like I said, not a question, just a comment for awareness for all of us. It's going to be a little bit messy, probably. So I think, I think my request is simply that we all try to show up with a little patience and kindness and just realize these, this is, construction is not pretty, but sometimes it has to happen. And we've been, people have been clamoring for better roads. We're going to get them, but it's going to be not so much fun to get there.
Right, and we should be able to finish phase one within three weeks. That's, that's our goal, because remember, it's just a mill and overlay, so it should go fairly quick.
Thank you, appreciate that, Mr. Harmio. And with that said, if there's nothing else, I would like, I would like to move to approve resolution 2024-17, approving a sponsorship for a transportation project fund application for Blueberry Hill Road improvements.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brush?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Muscatenes. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Overhill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Muscatenes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Joe.
Our auditor still hasn't arrived, so the next item is also for the auditor. It is a requirement to Department of Finance Administration that we approve this resolution. I would suggest to the commission that we table this again, and then we continue on with the agenda.
So we need to table 10F until auditor comes up to say it's.
I will make a motion to table until the auditor.
And I will second that. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Overhill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Muscatenes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. We move to 11A, contracts, discussions, MOUs and bids. This A is discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of a property lease agreement between Taos County and the town of Taos. Commissioner Harmio, you want to?
Thank you, Chair. You did receive the lease in your packet. Mr. Trujillo presented, worked on the lease. I did present it, the copy that is in front of you, that was presented to the town manager last week, who then quoted him, he did pass it on to his attorneys. They had no changes to what Mr. Trujillo came up with. Any questions on the lease, I would defer to Mr. Trujillo.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Of course, we did have a meeting with the town of Taos last week, Thursday.
Yeah, two weeks. Two weeks on Thursday.
Week and a half ago. And what has been discussed, we obviously have the draft of the agreement in our hands, and it's been discussed, and we have further discussion, Commissioner Overhill?
Yes. So my only request to change, a change in this lease agreement would be the term of lease. It calls for a 50-year. I, I think 30 is more reasonable, although I do recognize there is a term, 6.2 allows, it's called a term for convenience. So that allows us to, to end the contract, but I still think 30 years seems more reasonable. That is what we use, that's the same amount of years that we have on the hospital, it works. 50 seems like quite a bit of time, and so I, that is my recommendation. We change to, I recommend a 30-year versus a 50.
Okay, any further discussion? Of course, what is in agreement currently, Mr. Trujillo is 50, 50. Could you give us a little bit more elaboration on that?
Good morning, Commissioner. Commissioners. Yeah, the, the town put the 50-year term in the original lease. We did not modify that because of the provision that was delivered to by Commissioner V. Hill, which allows either party to terminate for convenience with 364 days' notice. So in essence, this is a year-to-year lease, in that the county commissioner or the town council could decide that they could end it with that notice, utilizing that provision. In my mind, I haven't worked on, I've been doing this a while, I haven't had any lease that went unamended or unmodified for 30 years, or 20 years, or 10 years. I'm going to assume that this is going to be a document that, as we learn to live with each other, is going to be modified anyway. That modification could include the term if we want to, if there is one in the future. But I don't think that, given paragraph 6.2, that the county is locked into this thing for 50 years. It's really locked into it for a year. And for that reason, we didn't change the 50-year term. We left it as written.
So the one-year termination for convenience leaves the possibility for either party to terminate it if they so wish?
Yes, and I think that's important, because there are five members on this commission, and two years, it may be a different commission, and 10 years, it will be a different commission, most likely. So each, each one of those commissions in and of itself, I think, will have the opportunity to start over, to amend, to terminate, because of paragraph 6.2. Having said that, I mean, the years, 30, or 50, or 20, or 10, I don't think matters as much, and for that reason, I mean, you could change it. The only, the only issue with that is, that was an originally proposed term by the town, and when we sent over our last draft, we hadn't amended it, and that's the one that the manager is forwarding to, to his council.
Could you elaborate a little bit more on other parts of it? For example, the consideration that is given?
Yes, sir. Well, the consideration, it's, it's an interesting dilemma, in that the lease is going to be, a lease where the tenant is responsible for maintenance of the facility, including snow removal and that sort of thing. Those are probably, that's a huge expense to the county that we wouldn't have, that we're not going to have to pay, because the leasing, the tenant is going to be paying for those, those costs, and other maintenance costs. It is those costs that they're going to be observing, absorbing, that is the consideration for the county over the term of this lease. The original lease was written by the town to have a $1 consideration per year. I mean, that's, that sort of lease has really been frowned upon by the Board of Finance, which this will have to be approved by the Board of Finance, in that it isn't, it isn't realistic to think that any piece of property could be leased for a dollar a year. So rather than say that, we put with the real consideration, which is the maintenance and upkeep of the plaza. That's the consideration flowing from, from the town to us. We were in the process of having to hire someone or hire staff to do that maintenance on the plaza. When it was determined that we own the plaza, this will allow us to not have to incur that expense. In terms of other provisions of the, of the lease, there is a provision, as I stated, that says that the State Board of Finance is going to need to approve this. So there's three steps to this. Both, both entities will approve, that's those first two steps, and then the, the State Board of Finance will have to approve it. If you have any other specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Commissioner Overhill?
Yes, just some clarification. I think it's pretty clear here, but maybe for the public's sake, as well as mine. 5.2 talks about alterations and improvements, and it says the town may make alterations under improvements to the premises as are reasonable for the use of the property, only with prior written permission from the county. We all know that the trees are, is a very contentious topic, and I'm not in any way saying yea or nay to, to those trees. I don't know enough to, to, to discuss that now, but that would be one of the examples of what, if they were wanting to remove trees, they would come forward to discuss with the county or in written form. Is that correct?
One moment. I'm not sure if Brent's going to answer this or not. Am I answering this question or you?
It's your question.
Well, you got up and left. Well, when you talk about, you're talking specifically about paragraph 5.2, and it says the town may make such alterations under improvements to the premises as are reasonable for the use of the property, only with the prior written permission of the county. Now, whether or not that includes tree removal.
Well, it's altering, right, in some form or fashion. I mean, it's changing the.
In my mind, I'll tell you what, what that meant to me.
Okay, please.
In my, in my mind, that meant man-made structures. It didn't necessarily mean landscaping. I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure that it's broad enough to include trees, bushes, shrubs, grass, to any, to any real extent, but those, those sorts of things are things that would probably have been discussed between the two administrations. I haven't had any discussions with the attorney with regard to that.
And I think that's important, Commissioners, because, I mean, certainly that's a change, right, a major change. I'm just, I'd certainly love to hear what you all have to say.
Well, trees are definitely on a lot of people's minds, and they want to really consider that, but, but I think most, most of it would be general everyday maintenance regarding landscape, but if it was something major, like the Veterans Memorial, then I think that would apply where they would need to get written consent.
That would certainly include it. So for instance, you have trees out there. If you wanted to trim the trees, do you need to have approval first? If you have a dead tree, do you need to have approval before you remove it? I, I think that's probably beyond the pale, but again, that, that is probably, I'm hoping, has been discussed between the two administrations, or will be.
That has not been. Trees have never been discussed. So, discussions have been around the Main Street grant, implementing that within the plaza, and some of you have had the opportunity to speak with Charles Whitson from Main Street, and my understanding from the manager, that's, their only desire is to go forward with plans by Main Street.
Right. It is my hope, I may, Chair, that we're going to be talking about these things that are, that are going to be happening on the plaza, and certainly that the public's invited, and their input is important. But in regards to also the statute, I mean, we, you know, I don't know how other folks feel, but that's another potential removal down the line, could be, and what we need to make sure is that we protect.
I think the statute would be included under that, that.
But trees aren't. You don't believe trees are.
Written approval would be needed. Commissioner Romero?
On here, let me say, written approval. We have the code of issues.
I think, depending on the situation, it would be through the managers. Certainly, as long as I'm employed at the county, my, I would not allow any alterations to the Veterans Memorial, the Father Martinez statutes. I think those are non-starters for us. The discussion of taking down that little building on the corner next to the Veterans Memorial, I know that's within their plans. That may or may not, would cause me to come back to the commission and say, hey, this is what the, the town would like to remove that building. Is there any objections? But I think installing benches or that, I mean, between the managers or between their staff, they can install benches without coming back to us, unless, unless they want to do something that changes the character.
I ask you about that.
Sorry.
It's going to be insured by the county and the manager.
Right, so both of us are going to have it insured.
So there's a tree, it's dry, and we are required for commissioning, or somebody gets hurt, or, I think it should be done through you and the manager.
Right, and we've, right, and we've done that.
Especially cut a tree out.
And we've done that in other instances where myself and Mr. Silva has had to take immediate action for something else, and then we've informed the commission afterwards. Yeah.
Through you guys. Meeting, meeting, meeting.
Right.
Okay. On, on the number of years, either 30 or 50 years is a long time. Most of us would either be around the sea, but I, my sense is that the county will want to remain somewhat engaged, and so I think we'll be reviewing or, 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 the issue is not going to go away totally, but by putting in place this contract, I think we'll remain engaged.
I think we'll remain engaged.
With that, Commissioner McGee, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the, excuse me, the lease agreement with the Town of Taos regarding the plaza. I will make a motion to change from fifty to thirty. That's my motion.
Okay. The motion is on the floor to approve the lease agreement, the agreement regarding the approval of property lease agreement between Taos County and Town of Taos with the one change of changing the fifty years to the thirty. Is there a second?
I will, I will second that.
Madam Clerk, if there's no further discussion. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
No.
Commissioner V. Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Just on that note, just know that the Town of Taos may reject that, so.
And may I ask a question? And if they reject, certainly it comes back and for further discussion, right? It's, that's kind of the, or how does that work?
Well, I mean, strictly in contract law, there's an offer and acceptance. And then the rejection of an offer is basically the end of it unless somebody makes a counteroffer. So it's likely, but certainly not assured it would come back.
Right. And if, in fact, it does not matter, that number does not matter, it should not matter. I mean, seriously, thirty, fifty, I guess, we could have left it fifty. But once again, if it doesn't matter, then why should thirty matter to them versus fifty?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Okay, we move on. And we move back, I guess. We do have our auditor in the room. And so, Mr. Parabio, I'll go back to presentations.
Before, even before that, probably make a suggest to the commission that you make a motion and, and vote on coming back to presentation since we tabled that item.
Okay. Intertated motion to move back to item nine presentations. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we return to item nine A, a presentation of the Taos County Financial Audit Report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2023.
Okay. The motion by Commissioner Brush?
I'll second that.
Which my Commissioner Mascherinas. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner V. Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes.
This is our auditor. Some of you have met Mr. Bobby Cordova from CPAs. He's run his own firm for probably ten-plus years now. But he has great familiarity with Taos County, Town of Taos, even Questa, with his past employment. So he knows our region well and very familiar with us. And thank you, Bobby, for coming up today. I need some of that presentation.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you, Brent. My name is Bobby Cordova. We've prepared a brief presentation here. There's a requirement in the state of New Mexico that all audits be presented in a public meeting. And so we're satisfying that requirement today. All this information has been discussed in detail in previous meetings or briefings that during the audit. So this is just kind of a summation. We had the exit conference and discussed for over an hour the details of this. So this is a condensed presentation. The actual financial statements of Taos County are housed on www.saoan.org. That's the New Mexico Office of the State Auditor's website. So it's a, it's a, it's an over a hundred and sixty-page document, a lot of information in there. And so I'm just going to touch today on the timeline of the audit, touch on some financial highlights, the communication with the commission that was performed during the audit process. I'm just going to touch on that and then go over the opinions and the reporting. Okay? So as far as timeline, the, the county's audit is due December first. So the period that we audited was fiscal year twenty-three. So the period from July twenty-twenty-two through June twenty-twenty-three. So keeping that December first twenty-twenty-three due date in mind, we kind of worked with management on, in the summer, you know? So we started planning communications. We know there was challenges in fiscal year twenty-two. We ended up getting it in on time, but we didn't want to repeat that. So we kind of had some communications in, in May and June. And we had a lot of back and forth. There was a lot of prep done by, by your team. So at this time, I just want to thank Emily and Elsa. Emily was new to the process. And then Elsa in the finance department, a lot of hard work goes into this. And also Paula and her team in the treasures office for dealing with us and getting the, prepared by client items that we asked for during the summer. So over the course of a couple of months, we did some planning, preparation, risk assessment. And October sixteenth, we had the entrance conference. We had already finished kind of our, some of our planning and done some test work remotely before we were here. We were here for about a week. And during that, during that mid-October timeframe, we almost finished our fieldwork. There was some wrap-up items. And we pretty much finished up in October, went into drafting financial statements and findings and that kind of thing. And then on November thirtieth, we had an exit conference. Commissioner Brush and Commissioner Romero were there present. At the exit conference, we visited for about an hour, an hour and twenty minutes, and went over all the details of the audit. So ultimately, the audit was submitted on time. Okay? So we, the county didn't meet that December first deadline. The release and issuance of the financial statements was technically January twenty-second. It goes through a review process at the state. And the state auditor's office technically has the legal authority to release the financials. So they did that. And January twenty-second, it was a public document. There was also a federal single audit performed. So I'll touch on that here in a little bit. But because of that, there was a federal reporting requirement as well. And that was accepted by the office, by the federal clearinghouse on February fourteenth. So for federal purposes, Taos County was compliant with its audit requirements and responsibilities as well. Okay? So my deliverable for the timeline piece is that for federal and state purposes, the county was, was timely. Okay? This next couple of slides has a look back, just kind of high-level bar graphs on a couple of different captions within the financials. We discussed this kind of in more detail at the exit conference. But overall, revenue was higher. So that's a revenue that's earned. FY twenty-three versus twenty-two increase was about twelve-point-three million dollars. A majority of that had to do with the grant income, the ARPA funds and grant income. And then another caption that changed quite a bit was investment income. So FY twenty-two, you know, market was rough and it turned around. And you guys earned a lot more, about one-point-six million dollars more in FY twenty-three. On the expense side, a lot of those expenses or some of those expenses were pertaining to capital. So the expenditure, expenditure increase didn't translate on a full accrual basis. Okay? So full accrual basis, expenses were off about three million. But if you look at your fund statements, which is a different basis of accounting, was about a seven-and-a-half million dollar increase. So a little more in line with that revenue jump. You did, you did have an increase in cash, as we'll see on the next slide. So you, whatever you took in, you spent less than that. So it resulted in an increase in, in your cash balance. So if you took a snapshot at six-thirty twenty-twenty-three, your cash was about cash and investments, just as this is all liquid cash and investments, fifty-nine-point-three million dollars represents about an eight-million-dollar increase. So pretty good increase overall in the cash position, mainly in the general fund, ARPA, the grant funds, you know, your non-major special revenue funds, GRTs, you know, those funds increased in FY twenty-three pretty healthy. And here, general fund, again, pretty good increase there. It seemed like a relatively, you know, pretty, pretty good conservative approach there. Okay? A few other highlights. Total debt, that decreased by over five million, over five million dollars. So you made principal payments versus, you know, if you just look at the change in principal of what was owed, about a five-million-dollar chip away there at debt service. And then if you look at the business-type activities, solid waste in ambulance, the operating loss was about one-point-one million dollars in FY, in FY twenty-three. Majority of that is the ambulance fund. Okay? So the ambulance fund, about nine-sixty-two. And that's not total change in fund balance. That's just looking at charges for services versus the cost to perform those services for the citizens of Taos County. And then another note, just the pension and OPEB liabilities, you really don't kind of probably talk about that. It's not a budgetary item, except for the contributions on the employer and employee side. But overall, the actuarial study that was performed at the plan levels, your, your carved-out portion, the county's portion, increased about five-point-seven million dollars. Okay? So that's, again, we don't, we don't audit that number. We don't audit those plans. And the county, you know, they just, it's provided by Para Henry Tyree Healthcare. Okay? So, but that, you know, pretty significant increase there on the liability side. Okay? So that's the financial highlights. This is communications. You know, we kind of had several slides to go over, satisfying the requirements. Audit standards require us to communicate during the exit conference. Manias is the forum we did that. Just to recap, the, the audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and generally accepted government auditing standards. And the coin term is reasonable assurance. So we don't test every single transaction, every payroll, every grant. It's done on a test basis. Okay? And then the scope and timing, you know, we touched on that in the early part, the planning, the entrance conference. The scope was a financial audit and then a, a federal single audit combined under one report. Okay? There was no changes in scope. Our, our responsibility is to determine whether your accounting policies, the county's conformed a generally accepted accounting principles gap. And we determine that they do. So if you compare your accounting policies to Rio Reba County or Curry County or any county in the United States of America, they're similar. Okay? So that's the idea behind one set of uniform kind of principles in the United States of America. So yours, yours conform estimates. There are some estimates in your financials mainly related to the depreciation of, you know, this building, all the vehicles and equipment. So all the capital you expense over the time that those assets serve the citizens of Taos County. And so we determined that those estimates were reasonable. And then also I mentioned the pension and OPEB. In that actuarial study, again, we don't audit it, that liability is, it's a soft number, I'd say. It's an estimate. So there's assumptions in there about how long people are going to work and live, investment return, that kind of thing. So there's a lot of disclosure in your financials about that. We encountered no significant difficulties and no disagreements during the audit process as it pertains to performing our audit. And, you know, there were no significant misstatements. There was an adjustment of capital assets. I'll, I'll touch on that in a little bit. And then no significant exposures. You do have quite a bit of money, at least at six-thirty. And I'm sure Paula knows this and addresses as far as the investment policy risk, about forty-four-point-six million dollars was tied to kind of US, US government treasuries. Okay? So that's where a lot of the money was. Okay? Next page is the opinion. So the second deliverable we have for you is, this is the opinion we're rendering on your financial statements. The opinion we rendered was an unmodified or clean opinion. There was a significant adjustment to your capital, meaning buildings, equipment, land from the prior year. The county was not able to do all the accounting for that. So we had to qualify the opinion last year in FY twenty-two. So you guys went through the process. Elsa did a nice job and fixed that area. We still had some, some matters that we noted, but in terms of the number itself, we felt it was materially close. And therefore, we rendered an unmodified opinion. Okay? And that, that's on pages eight through ten within that, within our, your financials on our letterhead, the opinion. Okay? Next, next opinion is related to the single audit. So that's the procedures that we performed to determine whether the county complied with the coronavirus relief funds. So you received a lot of that money, and that accounted for about fifty-seven percent of the federal dollars administered. And so our opinion on pages one forty-six through one forty-eight rendered an unmodified opinion. Okay? So deliverable number two is clean opinion on the financials and also on the administration of that program. Okay? The next couple, next couple of slides.